So I guess we have to do this. Or we'll go through it point by point and discuss any disagreements.
I think I think what we should, you know, at least a major, major points like the first one impact on land. You know, they have submitted there. There's a yes at that point in time. Most as they've said, unless somebody has something different are 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 small to moderate. Impact or none or small and then it it would seem even and it goes through here that. Where we have major impacts, moderate to to large. Are mainly going to be handled all by the Speedy's permit at that point in time.
Exactly.
It's not anything that's going to have to do with us anyway, because they have to do their own review at that point in time. So when we have the the moderate to large impact, which are eye openers for seeker at this point in time. Those will either be rectified or they won't get a permit on the on the speedy stuff.
So the way we usually approach this is is it may occur if there were no other controls in place. But because most of these issues are storm water related, because the S P D S climate program in New York is so robust. In getting that permit, because we're over an acre of land disturbance, you know, that addresses all those issues. So we have a very, very strict guidance that we have to follow.
So so this board wouldn't have to worry about the things that are obviously, obviously. Like I said, with the eye opening issues. So their answer to the first one, impact on land is a yes. I don't know perusing down through there if if anybody sees any that that were were an issue in that in that section. At all.
Basically, in my answers and stuff like that, in my look, but. They were all small, no impact.
A lot, a lot of them, we don't meet thresholds.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, we move on. Number two, im- impact on geological features they've placed a no. That. Search has been done, I assume, and the 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 issues that. That pops up when you go into the state, when you go into the state site and you look. You put in the tax map number stuff, it pops up when you have these type of issues that have already been identified by D E C.
Yeah, I tried to get the mapper to work myself.
So to our our form, with the form that is attached to the application starts with the 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 mapper generates the form. So the stuff that gets auto populated like this, the geological features, you can't change that.
Right.
So it it it, yeah, it's on the form and it's.
So the speaker they put in has already got that checked off.
So in this case, we have no geological feature nearby, same with.
Yeah, I was just saying, I don't know if the site was down this afternoon or what, because when I went to go in and use it. Just it wasn't connected.
Really?
Yeah.
Surface water, again, the issues they've identified as being problems. Are are again, could have been handed through speed and the large, the matters to large.
Minor question I had on it was the have a. Stormwater intervention area. I'm not sure it's 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 a small one at the foot of the hill.
Yeah.
Because you thought where the runoff basically going down the road. The responsibility for maintaining that or figuring out after construction so that it's. Oh, yeah. It's it's that a hundred percent capacity, you know, capacity to assume that you're going to get a self build up from. Construction.
Right.
But other than that, I don't know, I'm not sure who does maintenance on that type of thing or.
Well, it's actually part of the S P D S.
Right, the D C, we have to stay in compliance with our our speed and permanent after construction and everything.
Yeah, so so that two hundred page document.
Yeah.
That that's that's what's called a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is a requirement of this B D's permitting.
Okay.
And then that that dictates all of that information, all the design information that had to our our upon sizing. And then as well as the the maintenance during construction as well as the long term maintenance and operation.
Okay. All right.
The D E C now for years, they they'd issue the permits and wouldn't check on anything. Now they've got a whole program in place where they're they're coming out and checking all these sites.
Our U S G O C business from Jessica, I'm sure, where in stormwater, this stormwater coalition?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you talk with Jimmy Joe, right?
Right.
To to Joe, is that?
Jimmy Joe, yeah. Jimmy Joe. Jimmy Joe Carl. He's a.
First name.
But it's the nights underneath it does a lot of his inspections and stuff like that. She's very much. Seeker.
Yeah.
Stormwater management type of thing. She very much up on that. She teaches a class of early inspections. So she know. Material steering.
The number four. So that doesn't matter in the surface water.
Well, ambient groundwater. Yeah. Yeah, you're you're they're showing no impact as you go through there. You're not doing any what? You're not doing any wells. You're not making any injections. And if if you were, it'd be questionable whether you reach any of the thresholds at that point in time. Anyone anyways. So, you know, they're stating no, they explain this down through that, see if they have any. Particular. Issue, because they're not going to be withdrawing water from the ground. They're not generating wastewater.
I had nothing on.
Pass the side because you won't know. You don't use any.
I had nothing on either four or five.
Okay, now, one of our projects.
Number six, impact on air. I had nothing there. I did that as a no when I went through this. Number seven, impact on. On on plants and animals.
And this is really the reason you check this box as yes was principally because of our tree removal. I mean, that was one of the.
I didn't get an answer on that yet. But there there's. And and this really. Really doesn't. Fit in here, but there is a, there is a method of calculating. The impact of tree removal and replacement with solar as a overall benefit or detriment. To the world. I had I had written I sort of just really because I'm nosy. To say, do you do you have a calculation? You know, do you have, you know, the obvious nice thing to be a. Excel spreadsheet. Which would require things. When I don't know if you guys did, did you do some research on that at all?
I didn't know.
Okay, the one research I did really. Was was it ended up saying that that in most cases it's a net zero. So if I were putting in thirty acres of solar and taking down thirty acres of woods, it'd be in that zero.
Yeah, it's it's substantial.
If you're doing the other way.
It it's substantial, but it it obviously depends how you look at it.
Yeah.
So what we did in our response was we we said, okay, well. Trees sequester carbon at a certain rate.
Yeah.
And then remember, it's just sequestered, so it's just temporarily storing it. So if you cut those same trees down and burn them, that carbon just goes right back to the ads. What we did is we said, okay, well, a tree sequesters a certain amount of carbon a year. And you generally produce a certain amount of carbon to produce electricity as well. It's about a six hundred times difference that. You you reduce six hundred times the carbon sequestration that you're losing in the acre of trees by providing an acre of of soil.
Obviously, it would depend on the type of generated resources you have in the region, right? If you have fossil fuel powered resources. That would, it would be a much bigger benefit, but.
And and with the sort of the the fallout of of nuclear power, virtually all of our electricity right now comes from either solar or from. Or from, you know, fossil fuel.
The state actually just shut down Indian Point. And they do a generator.
And there's in in our response, there's pretty published data as to how much. Carbon is produced per kilowatt hour of electricity produced burning fossil fuels. There's really good data on how much an acre of woods sequesters in carbon. So we just use those metrics to compare the difference. It's about six hundred.
What else is the benefit of a tree? Not equating it to a solar pan. I mean, are are we right? And then are we right in our grade school? It takes in carbon dioxide and gives out oxygen. Are we are we correct? If I do, I still remember. But then and and that's that's not part of your calculation, correct?
Well, the. The parameter that we're sort of managing. Is is carbon in the atmosphere.
Exactly.
Right, carbon in different forms, right? In this case, CO two, right?
Yeah.
Or or carbon monoxide or in its various forms. So trees, as they grow, they take carbon out of the atmosphere and store it in the their mass.
Right.
Right, so that so that's.
Producing oxygen.
And and they're producing oxygen, but that's.
But that's not part of your, what I'm saying is that's not part of your calculation. Your calculation is purely around carbon.
Right, because that's that that's the record, that's. No, nobody's worried about the oxygen in the atmosphere. They're worried about the carbon in the atmosphere. So we generally. The oxygen is not a metric that we're comparing.
Right.
It's it's the carbon in the atmosphere that causes the problems. That's what we're trying to.
Yeah, the math I was looking for was we know what trees do, we know what solar does, compare. You know, is is it better to have a one tree there compared to one panel? The one panels not producing carbon, the trees taking in carbon dioxide but giving off oxygen, the panels giving off energy. How do you? How do you balance that? But.
Well, I think the the point he's making is your your every. Every watt you're producing to the panel is offsetting that watt produced from a fossil fuel source. Or or the typical generation mix of the United States or or your locality. So you're you're offsetting that.
I understand that, but it still doesn't take into consideration the oxygen corruption.
Okay.
Okay, that the that tree, the oxygen that tree will produce over its life compared, you know.
Okay.
We 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 sort of need that and, you know. Is it mathematically calculable and should we worry about it? And what I found is that based upon it is it's it's probably a net equal. At at this point in time, there's no big benefit one way or the other. To this this amount.
Yeah, I I it's it's I would say it's negligible.
Yeah, if you're saying if you're just carbon, you're 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 correct.
I mean, the other thing is that they they're still going to be, you know, grass and vegetation under these panels, so.
So there's there'll still be photosynthesis going on in a different way.
Yeah.
The other thing to do with this project is a lot of the trees that you're taking down. Are they not this the product, you know, arm of this business? I mean, they're they're the the Christmas trees that these normally would have been cut down anyway. At one point or another.
Right, right. That that's a part of it, but there is there is natural growth, but it's generally because of low value growth.
All right.
That at some point in time, it's probably going to come down again.
Moving on to number eight, I noticed you didn't answer yes or no in number eight.
That was not intentional, so I just didn't check the box. So that would be, it should be a yes. That on the eight, on the master con, so that we. Check the. Each and individual items.
And then also A A, you didn't answer anything there. Oh, I'm sorry, you did, but you answered both.
Yeah, that's because it's a judgment call. So it's not obviously in the no or small impact. It's I think it's up to. I mean, we definitely are working in soil groups one through four. But what we generally do in those situations is Nice Dam. Agriculture markets agency in New York issues guidance for solar projects. On if you're going to do solar projects in agricultural land, the these are the rules that you should follow. We follow all those rules. The your two biggest ones are. Don't take the topsoil off the site. So so what we do is we don't, no topsoil ever leaves the site. Ninety nine percent of it stays in place exactly like it is. And then the other is when you put your fence up, make sure there's at least a six or eight inch gap below it so that you're not sort of. Impacting the movement of of smaller animals. So almost. Everybody except the deer and the larger animals like bear and deer can get through it three inch gap on the bottom of the fence. So it doesn't change any of their their movements. And then they also want to make sure you 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 keep the vegetation, a vegetated surface for your panel. You don't put a giraffe or some other thing. So you still have that that vegetative growth that help stabilize the soil as well as to provide pollinators and things like that.
So I mean, that's to me, I I've always thought of these as either or.
Either or.
And A A. So I was a little confused by that.
Yeah, I'm asking. I have implications. Yes, so in response to A A, we we definitely have soil types one through four. But we're mid, we're executing and designing our project, we're executing our construction in a way that protects the soil. So the the operative word is may impact. So yes, if if we didn't do those things, we would end up having a negative impact. But since we are complying with Nice D and guidance, any impact that we could have produced is minimal.
So it really should be.
Well, you're not.
And truthfully, it really should be no or small.
Yeah.
What you're doing is you're driving through it. It's not like you're.
Correct.
Changing anything like that and and your. Decommissioning plan is to restore basically back to what it was or is. Which there isn't. That'd be that much change because you're not really moving that soil off off the site or or doing anything like that.
Correct.
See, number nine, that was a no. Which which I, when I read, looking at all the other references, I agree with. Ten would also know, which when I went through all the other references myself, I agree with. Number eleven is the same.
And you do, I'm sorry to go back, you want to pretty quickly do this, I think about. Um, is there anything? Is there nothing about this? Historical preservations and offices and agricultural sites.
That's another thing when they originally do the thing through D E C and populate the. The 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 initial form, if there's anything there, it tells you.
Okay.
And then if they do, they have to go and go.
Remember the mapper, when we did that one, Pete, what was it down on Lake Street where we found the historical shooting range from the Civil War?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, and that was through that map or found that, so.
Yeah.
Usually the mapper will, if 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 your project site or an adjacent site. Has a historical property or archaeological sensitive area, it'll 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 top it. So we don't have any of those.
Okay, let's see, eleven, like I said, that was a, that was a, oh, that one you you didn't answer. But I said it was a no.
Because most of the, most of the. Information or where it sells at the C part is either no or minimal.
Usually the thing you run into here is snowmobile trailer.
Yeah.
Usually, in this case, we don't have any, but in our other projects, we'll have some mobile trails that we have to relocate.
Well, this year.
Any more.
Okay, so number twelve, the impact on critical environmental areas, that was a no. And personally, I agree. Okay, so um, number twelve, the impact on critical environmental areas, that was a no. And personally, I agree with that when I saw that.
Well, there is none, yeah. That's an easy one.
Impact on transportation was also a no. Impact on energy was also a no. Impact on noise order and light.
The reason this was checked yes is again because of the sort of the broad nature of the question. So we do have a light. We typically have one light in the entire project. May we may. We we, yeah, we may, um. And it's at at the inverter. So that that, your question is, do it have any light? So the answer to that is yes, we love one light. And then the noise.
Sure.
It's during construction. So they they. It's the question, do you have noise? Do you have during construction or after construction? Answer to us is yes, during construction. So and I think we talked about it briefly here, we'll have probably three to four weeks of pile driving. That that's probably the the most annoying part. Other than that, we have just that with alarms and things like that.
We just had to develop this in any other ways like that. Is we about for sale?
It's number sixteen. Uh, I agreed with that. That was a no. And number seventeen. You checked yes, and as I went down through the questions and your answers, kind of agreed with everything that you had there when I went back to the references on the. On the part one. Eighteen. Consistency with the community character. Proposed project is inconsistent with the existing character. You said yes. And um. The only thing that I had a question on was you checked two boxes under eighteen F. Zoning compliant largely. I guess that's not visible.
Yes, so the reason I checked them is because again, this is sort of just. My thoughts, not your thoughts, and so it. It's skewed towards the not obviously no or small, depending on how you look at it. Um. Um, so so we usually look at for this is, is it, does it comply with zoning as the. The critical determiner is whether it's consistent with with what's expected there. Although it's different than what's around us, right? There are no solar projects nearby. But it's allowed under zoning. So in our mind, that means that it's it's consistent with the character, but we wanted to make sure that. You know, that was a.
It's it's our zoning law or building laws put these. Type of things in those areas.
Um, so it's really a no. Or it's really a no or or a minor or a small impact.
Yeah, and and some of the guidance that um seeker gives you for determining whether something offers community character. It it's like. Scale of a prison. Um, uh, it even says, you know, a a large. Um, low income housing project can't be considered an impact on community character.
Right.
But it's 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 generally geared towards like massive projects that have big socioeconomic impact.
That's. That's all the way I have here as far as I review. Anybody else have, anybody else on the board have any comments? I don't see anything for us to sign off on or anything like that on the horn.
Well, we have the part we we will have to, yeah, so. We need a, we need a motion to find, uh, to accept the findings in uh, part two. And to uh, declare a negative impact.
Yes.
The only exception would be the water stop which is subject to the speediest permit. And they will do their own reviews.
The motion.
Make a motion that we accept this as a minimal impact.
Negative.
Negative declaration.
Just for the negative declaration.
Second.
Hold on.
Okay, we have Skip Curran.
Hi.
Brendan Noel. Amy Crandall, Angela Hawken, I'm Joey.
Hi. And then to sign off on the part three, we can do that later.
You could, yeah. Together and then you you would have a motion to uh. Motion we got to the site plan has presented, has last presented. John, you didn't muscle on the secret by three and. No, no, we'll prepare them.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the site plan.
The only thing is, is did they get their waiver? Who gives them the waiver?
Oh, we can wait. I'm sorry, with with regard to the height.
Right.
We can, we can, we can waive. The you, you can waive that as part of this, unless you think they need to go to a variance. But because these are movable structures and not.
Ninety percent of the time, they're not going to be.
Exactly. So it was, so what I would say is you can issue the waiver. Uh, based upon that, that they are movable structures and 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 are not going to be. Uh, stagnant at at a height. Uh, above, above allow, what are we allowed fifteen feet?
Above fifteen feet is our, is our uh.
And you said an absolute height, what, eighteen? Yeah, eighteen and a half, so. So I think he, I think this board, if they want to, can issue the waiver or they can send them to. The zoning board appeals, which will not really know anything about it.
I'm in favor of making or allowing us to do the waiver. So we put the waiver in the same motion.
Yeah, the same site plan, yeah. And it'll be based upon the fact that it is not. A stagnant structure that it is a that that does move and. And will only be at. He can, what, couple hours a day, maybe?
Or you just say it's approved based on the expected. The understanding that it's measured as the panels are flat or something like that.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept the plan as they are with the with a waiver included to. The with the understanding that the panels are actively moved. Actively moving in and out of the. Condition of eighteen and a half feet.
In second.
Yeah, Skip Curran.
Hi.
Brendan Noel. Angela Hawken.
Hi. Okay, yes, we're done. That's it. Oh, so we do have, there is a nicer reform. Uh, they asked someone to sign off that. You did issue the 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 site plan approval, um, so I can follow up with you.
Yeah, you can follow up when when those things are part two, part three and get that signed too.
It's like a one page.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Five twenty-three C T R W Construction. Twenty-three eighty-two Corning Road Horse says update, updated site plan review. Instruction of a twenty-five hundred and sixty square foot. Uh, for storage and office building on vacant lot. Text number six nine oh nine S three dish four four one.
I responded in writing to all the, any criteria that you had from that.
Yeah, hopefully have that. We nailed those then. Twenty-three oh four dash T T I H I. All all you sent us was the color.
They said they had a complete statement. And that. It was uh, he reviewed at their. March meeting and frankly, I don't care whether they did it or not. Since. From thirty days behind that. I don't know, I want to stay healthy, even if they hold their march maybe.
Yeah, Brendan, I got the two pages. The other one was just an empty template.
Yeah.
Yeah, they said on here now, at one point, they said they had a complete. Complete. I don't know what they hear.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you guys can hear me or not, but um, it did go to the county and it came back uh, local determination.
Was that great?
It it came back local determination. From the county. And that blank template is is, I think, the form we send once we make our final decision.
Okay. Well, this day is March twenty-third, kind of reviewed the proposal. And in a. In a. On March tenth, they deemed it a complete state. And then on March twenty-third, they deemed it an incomplete application.
Yeah, I'm not sure. There was some confusion on their end that that was when they thought we were withholding information from them for some strange reason. Um. Which obviously we weren't.
Okay, then they they looked at it, no significant countywide impact. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Here, okay, so we're 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 all set to to do whatever you want to do.
Yep, and then at the last meeting, um, I know. Uh, the one thing that Tom wanted was uh. The uh zoning criteria for the overlay district to just have uh Ted have his plans with regards to that in writing. So those um. Uh, the uh development. Um. Conditions for the overlay zone, just to have him uh write them out. Instead of just us trying to figure it out from the site plan that he provided. Um, so that's what Ted did. He he just had everything written down with regards.
All right.
Yep, so should be in good shape.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know you could do things like that.
Yeah, I'm a little like doing my homework, but I had to this night. I can work.
Right.
I didn't get anything more than what we had on.
No, that's all. I I went back. I I keep everything. I thought when I keep it by date, I went back two months, so it's like.
Plan.
Right.
I didn't get the updated stuff, so.
Well, the site plan has the building.
I would assume that.
We moved the bit, remember we moved the building.
The buildings.
To the north or the east or whatever the.
Yeah, property and everything like that, but there was other things that were in the P U D that I was thinking of. And I assume that Greg went through the P U D and environments and everything like that, so.
He went through the P U D and the overlay zone and. That you're happy with, right?
Right, it's not in the P U D. It is an overlay though. It's on the. East side of Corning Road, so it's it's not in a P U D zone. It's in the business zone, but overlay.
Yeah, there is not the P U D, that's just the business zone.
Business zone with the Miracle Mile overlay, yeah.
Okay.
Don't ask. Side is just a business zone.
So that's why Tom was. Must have been confused because you said P U D on that.
Right, but he was worried about the overlay, because the the overlay zone covers that side.
Okay, wasn't there a question about walkways?
Yeah, walk walkways can be through. Walkways and and can be through parking lots and part of.
Yeah, that's going right away, basically coming through the property, because there are no sidewalks that I understand.
Right.
In this area, so I'm not going to tie into.
Well, what we what we do is we make, we make each person put them in. And then someday we hope that they'll all be there. I mean, if you go up by Dunkin' Donuts, you're going to see a dead end sidewalk at that point.
But I'm not the first guy putting a sidewalk in on American mile, right?
No, 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 you're not, you are not.
Yeah, don't make an example out of me here.
Not not over this issue.
Yeah.
I believe it's a sidewalk or a sidewalk or a pathway.
Yeah, but it can, it can be built into your parking lot, built into your walkway into the building, all that.
Just don't encumber it properly, right?
Yeah.
Put a sign in the middle of the walkway, whatever. Criteria might be.
Sidewalk area.
There you go. Of course.
Well, I guess, has everybody read the the replies of the. That were sent to us? They were. I assume the volume. We had like uh. He's got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, all the answers were 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 spot on.
It's not his thing, but it's just, yeah. Point him out.
But I guess. We uh. Approve the site plan.
Approve the site, yeah.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion to approve a site plan.
I'm sorry. Um, we have to build into that to a negative declaration for the seeker, but it's a short form. So so there shouldn't be any, there's no critical environmental areas. In that, if you, I mean, water storage.
We're still gonna have to fill the form out and put it in file though.
Yeah, yeah.
Water an acre or whatever that that criteria is right out.
The speedy stuff, yes, is different in that type of thing. But I think all of those things are probably probably negative. They don't, they don't uh. They don't uh. They don't result in a uh. Change in the use or intensity of the use of land. The answer there would be. Uh, no or small impact.
Yeah, I think we did a short form like this.
I think you did, yeah. Uh, you get the character of the community is going to be fine because this is what it's for. No critical environmental area. Uh, no impact on level of traffic or. Or existing infrastructure, mass transit. You can just hope. Yeah. Uh, no real impact on. How about the private water supply? Which will just be connected. There is water in there, right? Uh, no historical stops or any geological, archaeological. No change, natural resources, groundwater, all that. And there should be little or no issue with erosion or flooding.
Were they smart enough to run the uh services?
Yeah. Yeah, actually, nobody knew. I know it took a little research there on sewer with the lateral holes there.
Is it on that side?
Yeah, it's like the sewer lateral, actually. Well, well, it comes across at the. American muffler. And there's a manhole there that shoots up to. When they did the oil change from Pennzoil, whatever it was, they had a lateral race through that property. So I had to do it right over, they had to do it right away through my property. Like, yeah, suffice to say.
It's everything's there.
Yes, yes, everything's there. Water, yeah, but I'm I'm, we're in it, I'm gonna tap. It's a. Another lateral that comes over that, so. Yeah, trust me, I I checked into this before I bought the property.
Oh. You bought. So their new building and all that stuff, they had a larger service. Yeah, that into a deep image, now I create a bite and then the water made that slide.
I don't want to tap that, but report anybody, no.
You crack it.
Put it, put it in the motion. The secret was reviewed negative declaration. I don't know that any.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion on the floor?
No.
No.
We we started one, I started off. No, no, we gotta.
Restated. Restated with the negative declaration, it was gone through the seeker.
Yeah. So we'll do that.
Uh, make a motion to do the site plan for the negative.
Need a second?
Skip Curran.
Hi.
Brendan Noel.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You should be good to go there.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, shadow of grass. For. Okay. Item C, number three forty one A, Sheezy Solar Project. Two hundred North Schumong Road, Horsets, New York. C P, Freeport Four LLC. Affiliate of Clear Path Energy LLC Site Plan Review. Approval of a five megawatt major solar collection system, tax map six one. Point zero one dash two dash forty seven point twelve.
If if, uh, did you want to add anything, John, or did you want to add anything, or no? Last time we were here, we gave a presentation about the project, we can certainly do that again. Maybe the time. We were looking to the next step, which would be to schedule a public hearing. And I don't know if that happened or if that's scheduled or. We can do it right now.
Yeah, one of the questions I had about. You realize that just south of you. Is a is a rotten gun club that shoots in your direction.
Yeah, uh, yes, yeah, I realize.
I mean, I looked it up, I looked it up, and for a target for twelve gauge target load. The lethality range to a human being is like three hundred yards, and it looked like on the map you were further away, but. We're just wondering, you know, with the firearms and everything, I spoke with the president, I'm a member of the club.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Disclosure, I'm a member of the club, and I spoke with the president. And he was gonna try and be here tonight, express his, you know, there was some concern, I mean, if somebody has an accidental discharge of a rifle or whatever. Just to, you know, make you guys aware, I don't know if he, he didn't know if he was gonna put a berm up or what he wanted to do with it.
You guys.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
Your problem.
And generally, I thought, I thought some of the people out there, they don't shoot that direction, they shoot rather toward the left. Well, depends on where the trap house throws the throws the birds. And oh, so I I would say, you know, what we we. When we do these projects, just with landowners, a lot of times they will still want us to be hunting on the balance of the property without leasing.
Yeah.
We can't, we're not gonna tell them not to do that, so in the same way, we can't tell the gun club not to. Well, he told me that there's a pond just on their side of the land, and when they walk through, they were they were gonna hire a a lead. Reclaimer. And when they walked through the pond, they actually found a line of lead. Read upon the down along the edge of the land where all the shop land.
So so we we did a did a phase one on the project, so phase one is like an environmental assessment of the property because of its history.
Draft.
A draft. So so not none of that, none of that came up as a as a as an issue.
Okay.
And and from our perspective. Frankly. The people worried about the least discharging firearms are people that belong to the law. So generally speaking, you're.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they're all pretty conscious, but once in a while, you know. It's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be remotely operated, certainly during construction, there that would be something, there would be some kind of, but during the week. Yeah, there are very few people around there, so. You know, if you if you end up shooting a few panels, well, I guess that's what insurance. Damage from tail. Well, yeah, it kind of goes down, on that side, it goes down the hill a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we just, they were just, you know, that concern, so.
Promise not to shoot that.
Those guys are good shots, so I wouldn't shoot that either. So I guess then we need a a motion for a public hearing.
Yeah. Should public hearing. And, uh.
Yes, so so on that, I we did have maybe a small request, would it be possible to have the public hearing? Between today and the next planning board hearing? Is that is that a possibility? Then then we could then. Possibly do the secret review at that next planning board meeting?
That was season one call spreading the media. Uh, we go for for for. We're fighting with some challenges about adding quarants.
Okay.
People out, you know. And free resignations with their. That'd be up to them, whether they wanna.
Maybe there's a day that's more convenient.
Or or given, I mean, this is, the Sheezy project's quite a bit different than the Parker project, our fewer neighbors.
All right. Is it possible to the property's only full of shit, right?
I'm sorry?
You said the property's only full of shit.
And we're stopping that, so is it, would it be possible to do the public hearing and potentially do secret on the same night? Is that doable or?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Are we gonna have, we're gonna do the. Well, for this project also.
Yeah, actually, we'll have the same stuff for this time.
Yeah, and actually, there's there's almost no tree removal on this part, so.
Yeah.
And our biggest environmental change was the tree removal on Parker.
And actually, you're. Yeah, we were planning.
Yes, yes. And then we're eliminating a.
You know, we're saying you'll have the speedies permit anyway for this as well as.
For context, we're we're working for the, you know. Late June, out of the internal deadline on on finance. Trying to get things.
So what we need to do is make sure all the bonding, all that other.
Yeah. They're gonna have to have all that set up with the town board.
Yeah.
To have.
Yeah, give us that stuff.
Yeah.
Town board meeting, and we can take care of that.
You can copy it right over.
Yeah.
When's the next town board meeting?
The next town board meeting is the next Wednesday.
We're gonna do it by then. They only meet once a month as well?
Twice.
Or twice on?
Meet, they'll meet that Wednesday, and they'll have a morning meeting two weeks after. And then they'll meet again same time, second Wednesday, fourth Wednesday in June.
So we have two opportunities to town board before the planning boards next week, yes. If you want to have all that addressed.
Yeah, I'll I'll get it.
Yeah.
But that should be pretty doable, to have the public hearing and the secret, the site plan review all in the same go.
I would think so, I mean, this one's gonna be a little more simple, I think.
Okay.
Uh, so I I don't I don't see that being an issue, I don't have anybody here.
And everybody got their plans, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
The only thing I had was is that, uh, I'm talking with the. Uh, groundskeeper at the church, he was there, sir. And, uh. He eliminated some of the nitrogen down there a while. I talked, I talked with Karen Shaw there, and he said they do, they have to be testing on their water there, because of the activity, turning their downhill from the.
Yeah.
They said nothing that has ever come up, but, you know, it will hopefully, I mean.
Well, so with with the elimination of the identification, that's gonna absolutely.
So I guess we need a, we need a motion in the set of of.
Motion, shut up public hearing, refer to the county planning board. And, uh.
I I was it already referred? I think they did.
Did they do it last time?
I think Greg, Greg, when Art mentioned he sent them the plans last time. I lost them. I didn't take it.
Well, let's let's not worry about, well, if it had, if it is, we're ahead of the game, if it isn't, it'll go right now. We'll get it there for there, hopefully there may be. Um, because you've got enough plans, I assume, here to choke a horse. Yes, so, set up the public hearing, referral to the county planning board, that's the motion.
Resolution.
Make motion to set up the. Public public hearing and send it to the county planning board.
My second, uh. And did did you get the lead agency letters back, or?
I don't, I don't, I don't. Yeah. Yeah.
Kind of those things to make sure we're all, we'll forward you a similar sheet as we did to secret review sheet, so she's really, as we did for this one. Again, it's a judgment call, we'll check both boxes.
Discuss. Cool, roll.
Okay, we have skip current.
All right.
I've been wrong, I'll be legal, first we go up there and show it.
Hi. Okay, next up. Number five forty four B Highland Terrace Horsets, New York, Don Francis Go was a developer, suspension phase two. Subdivision. Nobody here? All right, carry it over to next one. Number nine oh seven, Nicholas Camacho, one ninety two Old Pacifica Road. LLC doing business at Bolt Storage three sixty of the road, where so is the art site plan review, demolition of two. Pole barn structures and construction of a thirty four thousand five hundred and fifty square foot climate control self-storage building. Tax map sixty nine point zero nine dash three dash four point one. Anybody here?
Plan up? Just one down, yeah.
That's right. Yes.
Go ahead, talk.
There's nothing really to say, I went in front of the county board, they cleared everything. They're just waiting for your, whatever your blessings are.
Okay, did the. Your requests is for climate control?
Yes, they're gonna take away the two. Uh, pole barns that are there and basically replace them with a climate control.
Pole barn?
No. Origin, no.
These plans say pole barn.
That's definitely removed, these two pole barns are being removed, and they are being put in their place.
But it says pole barn, I mean, I, I mean, I. I don't know, but.
Demolition of two pole barn.
It says pole barn.
Basically, that area is going to turn into one big. There's the. There's the art, so. These are coming out.
I I don't see it, I mean, I don't see a plan, I guess, I'm kind of. Kind of a little.
There's no real.
It's switched on between. I don't see a site.
This is the evil, and then this is all the, uh.
Those are the setbacks.
Setback for all that, that's the thing, and it's just really. Exceptional, but. What is building exactly.
Inside.
Inside.
We don't care.
Correct.
We don't care about, we care about the outside.
So I think with the outside, the surface. And or.
Where do, now this all one, where where do where do people park to go in there?
So they can park anywhere around the outside of that building, there's corridor units you can actually enter, uh, on all those site plan.
Okay. Do me a favor and clean it up. Get rid of pole barn, if you have to build a pole barn, don't label it pole barn, okay? Uh, so so at least, at least we got it. So in the future, somebody will know what what we're doing here. But now, if the pole barns are gonna be gone, they should be on a separate plan, which I think you already have. They get rid of that, and just go to the building. Are the setbacks all all right?
They were.
Greg, are the setbacks all all right?
Yes, uh, so, yeah, the setbacks are all good. Uh, the one question I know, uh, what I gathered from the last meeting, although I couldn't really hear, I did have a small chat with Tom. Was, are there any, um. Stormwater infrastructure upgrades, because the size of the roof is going to be bigger than the existing, uh. Size of the two pole barns that are gonna be taken down.
Yeah.
Um. So, there should be some calculations done, um. To see, uh, with the increased size of the roof, if the existing infras- uh, stormwater infrastructure there can handle the increased. Uh, stormwater.
Is there any existing? Is there any existing stormwater structure?
I mean, it's that, it's so flat and everything like that, it's site drainage, isn't it? I mean.
Yeah, it it is skip, it's mostly, it's all gravel, um. And it, and like you said, it 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 just drains. There is some, uh, I think, I do think there are some some, uh. Ditches that direct the water, you know, away and to natural drainage area, uh, but. I know Tom wanted to make sure that that.
And yeah, because they're not, increase isn't supposed to go off site.
Correct.
So whatever you're increasing has to stay on site somewhere.
Right, which I believe that's why you sent it to the county. So they have to. And he didn't, I mean, the county didn't have a problem with the water, because they know it's a thing on. On the property.
Yeah, the town.
More looking at the road.
You're talking about the county planning board?
Yeah.
They don't do anything with water.
Oh, okay.
That, that, no, that's up to you to do. Uh, to 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 show that, you know. Yeah.
I was thinking, there is that one. Well, I'm not sure. So, so why would I involve that?
Hmm. I don't know, is there something stormwater would do, Greg?
Um, they they would probably be able to look at it for us, um, but they're not breaking over an acre of ground, so it it wouldn't be. Uh, you know, they wouldn't be required to get any D E C permitting done, um.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but it would be something that, uh, you know, Jimmy Joe and the team over there would, uh, you know, could at least take a, take a look at for us.
Who's your engineer?
Uh, actually, it should be on the bottom of that, I I'm just representing the Nicholas Camacho guy, because I'm local, actually.
Yeah, we've been dealing with Nick the most, he he should have. I mean, he was at the last. Uh, some representative was at the last meeting that should have gotten those stormwater questions, at least. To Nick, so he could give us something.
Whatever you guys want to do, you can, you can be secret. Through the. And, uh, uh. Uh, site plan approval and, uh. Uh, subject to, you gotta have the stormwater calculations and then Greg to review if. Infrastructure that has to be built, then it'll have to be returned. Return to this, uh, to this board. Uh, for further site plan approval. So it depends on how you want to keep them moving or not. Up to you.
Well, we should. We should, we should still do the stormwater calculations.
Yeah, they will, you'll make it subject if you pass to someone.
If we do the sub site plan review and pass that, and have Greg, make Greg responsible for reviewing the water.
Yeah, and and if it calls for a further structure to be built for stormwater, then it'll come back for stuff of site plan review and then be here. Then at least we keep them moving.
Okay, both of you have a motion?
Well, we we have a secret, we have the secret.
The secret, we have the secret part one, mirror.
It's just a short form, I assume.
Yes. Yeah.
So I don't know if anybody sees any issues. That was generated online.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't see.
Oh, the check mark, sure.
Yeah.
Oh, the check marks are in the right spot.
Well, we want. See. Okay.
Uh, it'd be, i- if we want to roll it into one, it'd be approval of the site plan, condition upon stormwater. Uh it'd be, i- if we wanna roll it into one, it'd be approval of the site plan, condition upon stormwater, stormwater review. And then negative declaration based on your secret and and uh. Uh and the condition would be that Greg will re- will. Review the stormwater plan when it comes in, if it requires further. Uh further uh structures, then that will be returned to this board for uh for updated site review.
We have motion. Second.
All right. Thank you, goodbye.
Okay, on the new business. Number nine oh eight, Hello Beauty Salon, Lisa D Randall. Eighteen seventy-eight Grand Central Avenue Horsehead, New York Site Plan Review, oppose six hundred and forty square foot additions to the rear of the existing building.
Is this the first? Are parking been calculated, you're already with parking with the update. Set out on your plan your site plan.
Uh I don't see the spaces per se, this is the only door we got, you know, you've got it right there. I don't see the parking spaces by free label.
There's not a lot of like, like labeled parking spaces in the rear, that could be including all these parts that we have.
So I'm probably gonna need you to mark some out, just to show that there's room.
Alright.
But I don't know how much, how many they need. Right, I I the out front may be enough.
Yeah, it it, when I did a quick look, it it seemed to be enough and and uh Mark Mazer uh was the is the engineer for this one too. And he he echoed the same thing, that there there shouldn't be a park, cause I mean, it's only six hundred square feet.
So we just, at some point, we're gonna need him to just show show him ten by twenty, just to show there's room to have them.
Yeah, and that could be uh done with with Mark, just given a quick letter or something like that, that's fine.
Lot coverage is fine, right?
Yep, lot cover is good, setbacks good.
Okay, this is gonna be referred to the county planning board that's on Grand Central Avenue. And then they should be able to wrap it up at the next meeting. Okay? Any other questions? Sure.
So next meeting, the next Wednesday?
No, the the first Wednesday of June.
Okay. So we just need.
Yeah, we're gonna get it down to the county, so they'll handle it during May, the May meeting, hopefully they have one. What date is today? You get it out this week, that we don't, we don't care whether they handle it or not. They don't get thirty days and.
But we just need something from the engineer for parking spots.
Yeah, something, we make sure that we got the parking. There's room, you can see there's room, it's just. We're gonna show that there is. No, no, don't worry about it, I mean, they won't catch up to that. Okay. Okay, so you're all set.
Okay, next new business, number six hundred C O H Striving Incorporated, two hundred industrial park road horse head. Zoning request consideration.
We we put that in, you 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 don't know anything about, you don't know anything about much at this point in time. Uh other than he wants the building and. This is gonna be retail?
No, no, office and store, office and storage.
Office and storage, okay. He's been, this is the industrial park. This thing is a real anomaly. It was, it was requested and created at the request of the town. And then after a few years, they just abandoned it, said, we don't even care what you do at this point in time. Uh so. What I'm suggesting is that rather than. Rather than mess around with this industrial park zone anymore. That we we recommend that the town board rezone the property, just to industrial and manufacturing, or industrial manufacturing zone. And get rid of this, get rid of this uh. Industrial park zone that just seems to cause us problems every every once in a while. Uh when when somebody wants to do something, uh what do we get? We would, we would like to start with. What kind of storage?
Uh I'm gonna still feed inside, uh so my trucks inside. You do highway, you you do highway. Yeah, and those trucks need to be separated on.
You did that a lot. I only work on the bank group account. Actually, most of that is giving you a flat. Make sure nobody goes through. And you know, I would, you were down, and I was working for Matt Sevens, and we're down in South, Southport. And this guy in this uh. Cadillac comes through and stopping him and he goes flying through. So then he starts coming back. And I'm, and he he he's, you can see he's gonna start flying through again, I grabbed his shoulder from the guy and threw it right down the wheel, right at the car. At this point, he stopped. And uh he said, what you got out of the car? And he said, what the hell you think you're doing? I said, stopping you, you wouldn't stop, and he goes, he goes, I'm, he's gonna do all this shit, you know. Who the hell are you, John Musco? Do I know your father? Yeah, the county attorney? Yeah, you know him, he goes, okay, don't ever do that again. Okay, leave me alone. So you're all, yeah, you'd be all set in the in the in the regular, regular zone. Uh to for that, and then we, if we got rid of that zone, now the 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 bad news is. That it's gonna take a a couple months to do it. Uh where the site plan review and everything will take a month. Are you gonna do anything to the building outside, you got anything you gotta do at all? Yeah, but I mean, I can build another building. I mean, leave you enough room when they kept that building, because they lied to us about all the other stuff they were gonna do. There was John, who was, what was his name?
Cat Waller?
Cat Waller.
Cat Waller, yeah, the guy who did the the windshield.
Yeah, he, yeah, he 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 never told the truth about his life. But he did. He was, he was not a nice man at all, but he come in, we're just gonna do this. Oh, we're gonna build this building, there's gonna be part of this building, oh, I mean. You, we we are gonna send it through as a rezone at that point in time to get you done. I'm gonna tell you right now that it's not gonna be done for at least two months. Talk to Greg. Just, it's, don't worry about it, talk to Greg, okay, don't don't ask me any questions. Talk to Greg.
I didn't hear a word.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much for that. We need a recommendation, you could change to to repeal the industrial park zone. And change the industrial park zone to industrial and manufacturing zone. Uh and I don't think there's anything in the industrial and manufacturing zone, Greg, you gotta take a look at it. But I don't not think there's anything that we really have to preserve out of that industrial park zone. To put into the the industrial and manufacturing zone at this point in time.
I I agree, yeah.
Sixty-two percent of the people were already there legal.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, so this is going to the town board.
This is going, yeah, this is a recommendation to the town board. Uh and uh it has to go to the to the county planning board also.
Can see the emotion for us.
I do.
I make motion, recommend town board rezones. Uh and we recall and rezone the industrial park zone to industrial manufacturing.
Last on the agenda.
No, that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it's.
Definitely, that shouldn't be there, nobody's made the application for the variance of it now, but this is uh. This is uh uh a plan, a plan that was approved previously.
Sorry, Greg, what did you tell me about?
Yeah, the uh. The attorney for the Love Church uh never filed with the county within the ninety days. So all they really need us to do is stamp our approval on the approved subdivision map. With a new date, and then they can file.
Well, we we just renewing our approval of the subdivision.
Yeah.
From that.
And the variances.
In order to sell either one of them, if they sell them together, there's no problem. If they sell either one of them separately, they need variances.
Well, they got the variances, we we went, yeah, yeah, we went through that whole process.
And we're all, then you're all set.
Yep, so all all we need to do, Joe, is meet and and stamp the maps with a new date.
Out the old resolution, we're renewing uh our approval of the subdivision and authorizing the map to be signed.
She hasn't stepped out for me, that's why she's there to take notes.
That's fine.
Okay. We need a motion to renew the resolution. Hi.
So you're in good shape. Great, thank you so much, everybody.
Guess that's. But we have, I don't know, do we still wanna discuss overlays? That's secret twos here, me on that.
In a third and fourth.
I, just one question, when we were going through that big secret, did you guys understand what all those letters and numbers were that went home? There's a, there's another long version of part one of the secret. Yeah, but those letters refer to this. That the long one, is that the thirteen page? Their, that's their thirteen page, part of their application. Yeah, but there's another form that those letters go back and refer to, that's this. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I did, John, we did.
Hey, do you need it? Bubba's brother, or the the mayor's brother. Bubba, so he went to go to, he went to the.
Yeah, we, yeah, we went and looked at the bus. Uh so basically, they're they're continuing their store out out of the bus.
Give him a job.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna ticket him.
Pay brush and a can of paint.
Yeah, yeah, we we're gonna issue him a ticket for uh violation of the operating permit. Continuing to operate without an operating permit. It was, it was, it was entertaining.
I would, I would work with the sign. Each year. Cause they didn't think I was capable of doing anything else, but like around the front, so. But then I got, then I I went and worked for Matt Sevens, hey, that was, that was more.